Good evening. The Douglas County School Board meeting is scheduled for August 15, 2016. Do you like calling the board? Stand and join us in today's meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its individual and the diversity and tenures of our own.
Take a moment to silence the reflections. Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes for August 1st, 2016. Is that for the second? Ask for them.
Send them. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes for August 1st, 2016, regular board meeting?
Send them. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Entertaining a motion to approve the setting of the agenda? Ask for them.
Send them. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We'll bring this down to our first person. Good evening. You do know our policy and would you say your name? It would be just a matter of fact, please.
Yes, sir. Jeremy Miller, 9397 Grace Drive, Douglasville.
Thank you. Ready?
So my purpose here this evening is to call publicly for greater transparency and accountability for our district's online credit recovery program, known as E2020, to submit a report on the program through the board. My claim is that the E2020 program is at best and effective for student learning and results in students earning credits that are not credible. At worst, it has been conducted in certain situations in a fraudulent manner. Let me acknowledge first that the system leadership is aware of this problem and have taken significant meaningful steps to address them so far. But I still believe it is necessary to come to you because, one, the public has the right to know what has gone on; two, there needs to be accountability that these approved changes do take place and are implemented in the long term; and, three, there needs to be support for additional changes that are necessary to make such programs credible and thus beneficial to our students. So transparency. The public has the right to know whether our high graduation rates are legitimate. This program has been cited as a major reason for our sharp graduation increases. So what is the exact contribution of E2020 to graduation rates? The public should know what percentage of our graduates earned graduation credits through E2020 over the past few years. Furthermore, we have a right to know if our tax dollars spent on this program provides true educational value for our students and our community. Until recently sanitized test scores for E2020 students have been hidden and inaccessible, even to school administrators, the public should know what percentage of E2020 students passed state exams in 2015 and 2016. And then accountability. Our high schools have become so dependent on E2020 to achieve high graduation rates that there may feel reluctance or even resistance to changes that would make the program legitimate and actually require that students learn. Thus, I'm calling for strict oversight that these changes are implemented, changes that deal with the most egregious abuses that I've observed. Further changes are needed, though, to make this program credible, changes that would be more difficult and require more resources and thus require the board's support. For online credit recovery programs to be credible, at a minimum, students must have access to a certified teacher and the content area that they are studying. In other words, students, for example, students taking chemistry and physics online should not be supervised by a social studies teacher. By allowing students to earn credits that are not credible, the E2020 program has, in effect, created a second class diploma without disclosure to stakeholders. It serves a largely marginalized and economically vulnerable population of students whose education tends to be disadvantaged and is easier to take advantage of. And not only diminishes the value of their diploma, but it undermines the integrity of any diploma issued by our system. The problems here are an expression of a disoriented value system that tends to place the expedient achievements of such bureaucratic goals, almost done with high graduation rates, over what is best for our children long term, which is real achievement and lasting growth. High graduation rates only benefit our students and our community if they are legitimately attained. Therefore, there is compelling interest that these problems be dealt with. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We bring this down to primary business. Resolution to...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. May I interject regarding if it's okay for Dr. Chris to look into what Jeremy has said and maybe come back with something regarding that, some factual or some information regarding what we're actually doing?
Be happy to provide that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chris. Thank you.
I'll work on that. Be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
We bring this down to primary business. Resolution to approve the government's opportunity to school district. Mister Chairman, members of the board, as you recall in our last meeting, we had some discussion about this in the board. We'd like to consider a resolution, a resolution for the board. I think the School Boards Association will be able to customize to our district and we'll put that up at the board's consideration and it's needs, but you all have it on and we'll have a future meeting, next meeting if we need it to consider approval. Any discussion? Thank you. We'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting. Action now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We bring this down to new business. Whole board training training. Mister Chairman, members of the board, each year you are required to have achieved three hours of training, actually more than that, but three hours of whole board training. And that requires that all faculty members be present at this training. As board is well aware, we have a very important accreditation visit for happening during the school year in January. And we would be, I think, prudent to board to go through some training on that process and the manstead accreditation process. We checked with GOSBA on providing a trainer again, also manstead. We have that available to the board for that whole board training as outlined there in the agenda item, October 3rd from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. prior to October 3rd. And a short break after, early afternoon break after, it's been a six o'clock after session. That suits the board. Any discussion? See you tonight. Thank you, Dr. Chris. We'll firm that up and bring that forward to the board as I discuss. We bring this down to consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. Ask for them.
Send them. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Brings us down to discussion. Speaking. We have a couple of updates for the board tonight. The first is an update from Ms. Nell's department, our student achievement update. This is what we try to provide the board this time of year. So we have this presentation and I'll check with Ms. Nell and folks who she has here to help her.
Mister Chairmembers of the board, we have Mr. Wiley Daly, our Director of Assessment, Accountability and Evaluation, and Dr. Jessica Ainsworth, Assistant Director of Assessment, here tonight. They're going to share with you the 2015-2016 Georgia Milestones assessment results. They're also going to review the 2015 College and Career Readiness Performance Index course. And just a reminder that that is from the 2014-2015 school year. So what you'll hear about tonight for CCRPI is from 2015. We're still awaiting the 2016 scores and we'll share those with you once they are released. The data is definitely lagging and we hope that the 2016 data will not be as lagging as it has been in the past. So we do know that the Georgia Department of Education is currently working on the calculations, the final calculations, but they have not provided us with a release date. So you're going to see current 15-16 test results, but the CCRPI will be just a review of 2015 so that when we do get the 2016, it'll be kind of fresh on your mind as far as comparison. So in the loop over at your seat, you have a copy of the presentation. You also have some scores which include end of grade by grade level and content area and end of course by course as well. You also have a copy of the 2015 CCRPI scores and the indicators that were used for those calculations. And certainly if you have questions tonight during the presentation, we'll be happy to answer those, but after having some time to review the information in your folder, you have additional questions later, just let me know and we'll be happy to give answers to you. So we have Mr. Daly and Dr. Ainsworth.
Good evening. We're briefly going to go over some of the adjusted data from last year. If you look in your packet, you should have a review of the PowerPoint as well as the TIPS report broken down by grade level as well as by score, and that is for your reference. So let's first talk about Georgia Milestones. So let's talk a little bit about Georgia Milestones in grades three through eight. Students take the Georgia Milestones in English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science and Social Studies, and then there are ten courses in high school that students take an end of course which serves also as a student's final exam. There are four levels a student can perform in Georgia Milestones. A beginning learner who does not demonstrate proficiency, a developing learner who demonstrates partial proficiency, a proficient learner who demonstrates proficiency, and a distinguished learner who demonstrates advanced proficiency. Again, the end of course test serves as a student's final exam and also 20% of that student's grade. Or, end of grade, it helps determine that student's promotion retention status. So in grade three is for reading, and grade five is reading and math as well as for eighth grade. And then also informs Georgia's accountability measures, which you'll hear from Mr. Daly, and how Georgia Milestones intertwine with the College and Career Readiness Index. So now let's talk a little bit about the data. When we look at third grade, we are above the state average in all four areas, English, Mathematics, Science and Social Studies. In grades four, we are above the state average in all four areas again. In grade five, we are above the state average in all four areas. In grades six, we're above the state average in Social Studies, same as the state average for Science, and below in the other two areas. In grade seven, we are same as the state average for Science and Social Studies and below for the other two areas. In eighth grade, we are above the state average in English, Mathematics and Science and below the state average for Social Studies. And then on the screen, you see our high school courses, which I discussed earlier. We are above the state average in U.S. History and Economics and below the state average in the other areas. What you'll find in your packet is most of Douglas County school systems saw increases when you compare the data from last year to this year, and we did include that data so you could see how the schools made progress. Our department has responded to this information and we've been working with our individual schools and leaders as well as other staff members at their school to analyze their data and help them design specific next steps so they can ultimately impact those students in the school building and respond instructionally to those students. Now, Mr. Daly, we just want to speak briefly about the College and Career Readiness Performance Index.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Wonderful.
Dr. H. R. Sheridan gave you the Georgia Milestones results from 2015-2016. Just to reiterate, that data from the Georgia Milestones assessment from last spring will populate CCRPI. That timeline has not been shared with us as of date, and the CCRPI data that we're going to share with you is from 14-15. So what is CCRPI? CCRPI is a comprehensive tool that focuses on school improvement and accountability. It promotes college degree career readiness for Georgia public schools, provides information on the performance of schools, Georgia districts and the state using the easy to understand 100 point scale. CCRPI once again is calculated utilizing like that. CCRPI contains four components. Those components are achievements, progress, the achievement gap, and challenge points. CCRPI provides data on all students, including informational components such as performance flags on our subgroups and ratings for our school clients. Combine the four ratings, achievements, progress, achievement gap, and challenge points, total 100 points, the schools have the opportunity to earn an additional 10 points. The first component of CCRPI is achievements, and that is worth 50 of the total 100 points. Achievement component focuses on student performance on state assessments, participation in other measures of college and career readiness, and the predictor for classroom graduation. Achievement has three components. Those three components are content mastery, post-readiness, and graduation rate. Graduation rate is for high school, but the predictor for high school graduation is for middle schools and elementary school. If you'll refer to this document from your packet, you will see the indicators and the difference strength of the achievement component of CCRPI. Elementary schools have 11 indicators. Middle schools have 10 indicators for achievements, and high schools have 18 indicators for achievements. The second component of CCRPI is progress, and that's worth 40 points. The progress points are awarded based on the proceedings of students' inability that are demonstrating typical and high growth compared to academically similar peers across the state of Georgia. Progress points are also based on student growth on Georgia Milestones in the grade and in the course. The next component of CCRPI are the achievement gap points. Achievement gap points are worth 10 points. Achievement gap measures how well schools are progressing with their lowest 25% of achievers for each of the Georgia Milestones in the grade or in the course. It focuses on students that are most actively behind, and schools are awarded these points by closing that gap between the state average scale score and the school's average scale score for each of content areas. And that information is also in your packet, in the large packet of the Georgia Milestones 15-16 data. You will see those mean scale scores there. The last component of CCRPI are the challenge points, and those are up to 10 additional points. There are two opportunities for the challenge points, but schools can earn points from both categories. The first category, or option one, is the ED or EL or SWD performance, which is the performance of economically disadvantaged or English language learners or students with disabilities. CCRPI acknowledges that schools work hard to ensure the success of these students. And when these students perform, these subgroups perform, schools earn additional points. These performance targets change each year as the expectations in the DOE for these subgroups continue to increase. The second option is exceeding the bar. Once again, schools can get points from the ED, EL, SWD, or exceeding the bar points. This provides more opportunity for schools to gain additional points for implementing practices associated with the college and career readiness. Each indicator is worth a half of a point. You'll see that elementary schools have seven indicators, middle schools have six indicators, and high schools have 10 indicators. That was also listed on the indicator packet that you have inside of your folder. Lastly, I would like to bring your attention to the red and green document in this inner folder. This is the CCRPI historical data sheet. You will notice that Douglas County is above the state average in elementary and high schools, but slightly below the state average for middle schools. As Ms. Nell said, you have a lot of documents in your blue folder. As soon as I'm sure.
Do you have this performance data presented in this packet?
It's in the green packet, yes, ma'am. Between the last two sheets. It's in your data packet.
The other packet is different.
Yes, ma'am. As Ms. Nell said, you have lots of information in your packets, and feel free to contact Dr. Ainsworth or myself if you have any questions.
There's a lot to take in and know that you'll enjoy some time to look it over and get to bed as soon as we do have any questions. I'll have to talk to you at night.
Mister Chair. Mister Riley or Mrs. Ainsworth?
Please speed up.
I am on the key findings page for high school.
Okay.
And I just wanted to know, was there a new curriculum regarding the literature and algebra to account for these percentages?
Yes, ma'am. We have changed curriculum with our algebra. So we saw where in algebra, there's not really a comparison between last year's data and this year's data. Most of our students took algebra last year, the previous year. Most of our students took core net algebra. So it's very difficult to make a comparison when you look at that information.
Right, because the transition between the two curriculums would account for those numbers being the way they are.
Yes, ma'am. We'll also see that this year with analytic geometry.
Thank you so much for clarifying.
Thank you, Dr. Ainsworth. National Assistant Counselor here. I bring this down, I drew all of your hand in the fifth presentation. Mister Chairman, Ms. Nell's got another item tonight for you. She's going to give you some background information on this because some of the mere board members are not willing to read personal through this, so we do need background information, so excuse us to back it up a little bit, but we just think it's important and helpful to do this presentation.
Mister Chairmembers of the board, in 2010, the 21st Century Classroom Project began. A technology committee made up of students, teachers, building and district administrators, higher education, parents and community members was established. The committee identified what Douglas County school system standard 21st century technology would include, and that would be classroom projectors, interactive whiteboards, interactive response systems, interactive slates, audio enhancement, document cameras, printers, phones, and wireless capability. All Douglas County school system classrooms do meet the 21st century classroom standard with the exception of the audio enhancement system. In 2013-2014, a pilot of audio enhancement was conducted. One classroom in every building was outfitted with a system that at that time included the audio piece and the safe system. At the completion of the pilot period, a survey was conducted to gather feedback on the pilot program. Eighty-nine percent of teachers surveyed and ninety-seven percent of administrators surveyed reported that the system would be beneficial to all teachers in their buildings. Since the pilot, audio enhancement has changed to include cameras in the classroom to be used for teacher reflection and evaluation, and that can also be used for discipline and safety purposes as well. We would like to consider a pilot of the complete system at one elementary, one middle and one high school. Schools would be selected from volunteers after they've had an opportunity to hear more about the system. At the completion of the pilot, schools would be surveyed to gather feedback to help determine a recommendation for next steps. Daniel Dooley and Brad Coleman are here tonight to, I'm sorry, Coleman are here tonight to provide a brief presentation about what the audio enhancement system has to offer. The purpose of this presentation is to give you information to consider for when a recommendation for next steps is brought to you. We have Daniel Dooley here. Hello, pass.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for your time. We're trying to make this as brief as possible. We're going to cram a three hour presentation into one minute, so we'll go quick with this. So really, first of all, I want to start with, I travel all over the country and I meet with school boards and districts and superintendents, and the one common thing I hear over and over again is the two most important priorities are student achievement and the safety in the classroom, getting kids back home. Some will say one over the other, but those are the two most important, and when I look at your mission, that's the same as your mission. And what you'll see today is the only piece of technology that I've seen that actually addresses both. And Pam talked a little bit about, and I've seen the audio part of it, we're going to show you some additional things today. You may have seen some of this at the school board meeting back in December, they did a session, a breakout session, where they talked about this, and you may have seen that some of the work with that. I want to start with today, just the audio. Brent's going to talk a little more depth. A lot of y'all have seen that, again, we piloted it, we tested it, but this company actually started the audio category in the mid-'70s. Won't get into the history of it, but a mother had two deaf sons, lived to do well in the classroom, and she devised a system that became a company. Now there's several other companies doing it. Most every big district in Florida uses audio enhancement. It has for years and years and years. And about 10 years ago, when everything was going on in the schools, they came up and said, "Our teachers wear this around their neck every day. Can you put a panic button?" And y'all have used the panic button in some of your classrooms here. Can you put a panic button that lets the front office know there's an emergency? It's a silent alarm. Brett will talk about that. And they did that, and that's called the safe system. Teacher presses the button, the district is on, the school's notified, there's something going on, whether it's a medical emergency, an intruder, whatever the scenario is, they can get help. And that was great, but the problem was, they didn't know it was a difference of a medical emergency, a discipline, or someone in the classroom that didn't belong. And of course, we handle that differently for every one of them. So the next step in the evolution of the company was to put a camera in the classroom. The teacher totally controls the camera for the instructional side that is always there for an emergency. So if the camera is not on, the teacher doesn't want to use it. That's fine, but as soon as she hits the button, the panic button, the camera opens up and you have eyes in the classroom. Through your cell phone, through your email, you can assess the situation and know how to attack it. And Brett will talk a little bit about that. I'm going to turn it over to him. He's going to dive into it. Again, we're going to go quick and stop us if you have any questions. I'll map.
Certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. It is a privilege. When you say, "What is audio enhancement?", it really is all about balancing sound in the classroom. If we look around here, you see light. When you design a room, you want to make sure the light is balanced, so we want to do the same thing with sound in the classroom. Daniel just alluded to the fact there was a mom with two hearing impaired sons, and she was just looking for a solution for them so they could be in a regulated classroom. She had a wireless microphone that she put on the neck of her son's teacher, and he had a little speaker, the oldest one, and now he could hear. What she did not expect was that the kids around her hearing impaired sons, the normal hearing children, they could hear, their scores went up, and that's how the company started back in the '70s. And since that time, there's no stronger research you can find on technology in the classroom, putting a microphone around a teacher's neck. It all says that if you do that, learning will go up. Why does it go up? It's really simple science. If I'm standing here, this gentleman here can hear me better than this somebody across there. And it's just a simple fact. If you look in a classroom, the student that's in the front row is going to hear better than that student sitting in the back in that third row. So a teacher wears a wireless microphone. This is one right here. There are four speakers in the ceiling, and now we truly have surround sound in the room. in the ceiling, and now we truly have surround sound in the room. So wherever that student is hearing, the vessel level is going to be just like I'm talking to the gentleman here. And every student can hear, and if students hear better, they learn better. I'm going to stop for about ten seconds, and I want each of you to try to read that paragraph to yourself. Bunch of jumbled words, right? I can probably guarantee that all of you read that pretty much easy. Now, you're intelligent, you're well-educated, but the reason you can do that is you're adults. The auditory part of your brain is not fully developed, you're about sixteen. Why does that matter? Because when you miss a word, or you miss phrases, your students sitting in that classroom where you don't have audio enhancement, you start filling in information. And when you do that, you're pulling from your knowledge. And a lot of times, that's incorrect, the younger you are, it's miss information. So that's what happens when that student's in the classroom, and they miss words. Sorry about that. Not only does this technology increase student achievement, it's the only piece of classroom technology that's a direct health benefit to your teachers. Probably the most rewarding thing for us is we walk into schools that have this, and teachers will say, "I've never had this much energy." Teaching's the number one profession in the U.S. for throat and voice issues. It takes a lot of energy just to stand here and talk. And you've all been through, you remember losing your voice. It's even harder for them to protect their voice all day long. And there are study after study after study that shows that actually, teacher absenteeism rates drop when you put sound enhancement, audio enhancement, in a classroom. You can see the study there from the view. In Orange County, which is Orlando, Florida, they rolled it out into two-hundred-plus schools. The schools that had audio enhancement, teacher absenteeism rates were twenty-five percent less. You have more energy, you're not losing your voice, you're more out to show up in the classroom the next day. And from a return on investment, think about the fact, if you can just drop teacher absenteeism by twenty-five percent, what would that mean to Douglas County? You're spending sixty, seventy, eighty-plus dollars to bring that substitute, plus now you've got that certified teacher that's in the classroom. All in all, sorry, this thing's sensitive. What are the benefits of putting audio enhancement in your classroom? Studies show that student achievement will increase by about five to ten percent. In Orlando, it's ten percent. What are the things that will go up? There's also a student microphone, looks more like kind of your American Idol, the kids love to talk into. So you'll see student participation will increase. Now that soft-spoken student is sitting in the back of the room, she's more out to speak to other students and hear her. Behavior improves. Because if I'm engaged and I can hear, I'm more out to just stay focused on what the teacher is saying. And then what will drop, one of the things is, teachers aren't repeating themselves. Again, if you can hear me, you're going to pay attention, I'm not repeating myself over and over. Moving right along, and Daniel alluded to the safe system, so teachers wear this around your neck, and there's going to be emergencies in classrooms from time to time. You've got the medical seizure, you've got the flight in the room, there may be a parent that's in the classroom, he should be there, doctor, visitor, intruder, what happens? Well, if you have this, the teacher just presses and holds the panic button, which is right on the microphone. It sends out an alert to a box, and this box is placed somewhere in the front office or by a student, resource officer. It's a sound alarm, and it will start and blaring out, scrub lights going. In the classroom, there's a dump sensor that's placed in the middle ceiling, and the lights on the dump sensor will turn, three of them will turn red when I successfully hit my alert button. When someone has received the alert, you know they caught some of the light, two of those lights turn back to green. And if you talk to districts that have this, there's not a quicker way to respond to an emergency. It's having that button right on the teacher, and something happens, I just press and hold it just for two seconds. Newton County, which is Covington, which is really equal distance on the east side of Atlanta, they were the first district in Georgia to roll out the safe system. This is a little video that was on CNN, and this was right after the Sandy Hook accident from a couple of years ago. So I want to show that to you. And that led to cameras being placed in the classroom.
How's it go?
Not bad luck for this.
How's it go?
Teacher Gina Butch at Newton High School in Covington, Georgia, says her students are special.
It's the same thing.
Congressional election, or what?
But look closely, there's something different about her, too. You wear this around your neck, tell me about this.
Well, this is a teardrop microphone, and basically it amplifies everything that I say.
The mic is designed by Jeff Anderson's company.
The audio enhancement story started with my mother, trying to devise a system for my brothers to hear better in schools because they were hearing impaired.
His family has been in the educational audio business for about thirty years, but what started as a simple microphone has now developed into the safe system.
Well, principals, superintendents, and school board members came to us years ago and said, "Please, implement a safety alert button in your microphones because it's the only thing the teachers currently are wearing to where they can alert the office."
If Miss Butch were to need assistance or feel threatened, she pressed this button, and immediately that camera would snap a photo, which would be emailed to administrators and school resource officers, and then this would happen in the main office.
Attention administrators, I have a sound alarm in room number forty-four.
The administrators and officers would come to this room, and the entire time, the camera is transmitting a live signal and recording video, possibly for an investigation later. There's like fifteen hundred classrooms now across the country that have that. Director of the Safe System, Gregory Thomas, says his phone has been ringing non-stop since the Sandy Hook shooting, with superintendents looking for an extra layer of security. What would this have meant to the teachers and the students at Sandy Hook?
I would say too little. I think at this point right now, obviously, the gunman is already into the building at the front door, and we have the ability also in the system to put a panic button at the front door. It does the exact same thing that the button does if the teacher presses the button.
Newton High is twenty weeks into a partial pilot program, but Principal Craig Loggard plans to fully implement the system in every classroom next year.
Safety is important for our students, it is our number one priority, and we must make sure that we have the latest advancement in technology for our children. The enemies that we have are always prepared. We have to be even more prepared in order to be able to properly address situations and take care of our children.
This is something that helps me and gives me more confidence, helps me to protect my kids, because I know I can get help very quickly.
Victor Blackwell, CNN, Covington, Georgia.
So you can see the power of a safety button for teachers in the classroom. So when cameras went into classrooms to see what the emergency was all about, at first, that's what they were used for. The teachers came to us and said, "There's going to be a camera in the corner of my classroom, and I'll turn it around and I'll record myself teaching. Better yet, can I move it to the center of my ceiling and record myself teaching?" So now, a quickly emerging, growing number of districts in Georgia, across the south, across the country, teachers are now using cameras to get better, just like professions have been doing for decades. You think about your coaches, your football coaches, your basketball coaches, your great wrestling coaches. My gosh, that's a lot. They've been using video to get better for years and years. In the military, surgeons, so now teachers are taking advantage of this technology. What happens when you put a camera in the room? The first thing we see is teachers self-replay, and they're just like the rest of us. It's painful to watch a video of yourself, but once they get through, you know, I look bad, I sound funny, they really start to break down their teaching practices, and they make self-improvement. The other thing they do is they're able to look at their kids and see, who was really engaged in my classroom, who was not engaged? The second thing they'll do is share the video with peers. And there's no better feedback than sit down with that person that you're in the trenches with every day. And if you're an eighth-grade algebra teacher in Douglas County, sitting down with other eighth-grade algebra teachers and talking to them, recording videos, sitting down and watching each other teach. Or better yet, taking your best teachers here in Douglas County, and you've got your young teachers, and now they can sit there and watch a video recording of the best of the best here in the district. Eventually, that will then lead to using the video recordings as part of the teacher evaluation process. We now have several districts using the critiques and leaks. And the superintendent in Newton County, Samantha Furley, she says it's really changed the whole environment, the whole culture of the evaluation process. She said in her career, it's been more of a gacha tool. The principal comes, sits in the back of the room, and then you sit down a week or two later, and the teacher tends to be defensive. Well, now, you sit on the same side of the room, you watch that video together, you stop, you talk about what you did right, what you did wrong, it's all about now, getting better and growing in the track. Harvard just came out with a study here in the last six to eight months, where they analyzed, does video observation actually improve the teacher evaluation process? And there was an emphatic yes. And what teachers said in this survey, virtually every one of them, said, "I was able to watch the video and identify areas where I needed to get better." Nine in ten of them said they're actually going to change their instructional practice after watching themselves on video. Principals were equally as positive in the survey. Bill Gates, Bill and Lynn Gates Foundation, they've given tens and tens of billions of dollars to education. But they came to Bill about two years ago and said, "What would you do if you were Secretary of Education to improve education for the rest?" He said, "I'd put a camera in every classroom." He did a TED Talk on it, and you can Google that, it's about twenty minutes, it's really good to watch, but you can tell he's rich and famous because he talks about having a coach, his bridge coach, they actually watch video together so he can get better in bridge. And he took some trips across the world, talked about being a Shanghai China. And the culture may be different there, but one of the things that they take a lot of pride in is taking their master teachers and watching video of their young teachers before they bring them up, so they're the best of the best, and they're also a master teacher. In Georgia, and this is something that's very alarming for all of us, forty-seven percent of teachers will leave the profession in their first five years. The DRE study that came out about November last year, and the number one reason teachers gave for leaving the profession so early is they don't know what they don't know. They're thrown to the wolves, they don't get coaching, they don't get guidance, so they give up and they quit. And this is where video recordings can really come in and make a big difference for that. So, the camera can help teachers get better, but a huge side benefit, and Daniel referenced this on the front end, it's in your mission statement, it's about increasing student achievement, it's about having safe buildings, and this camera is able to do both with one, because it actually has two feeds in the camera. So far, we talked about the instructional feed. And it's something that I'll park on here, it's ultimately up to the district of who has their hands on the camera and who can control the camera. Newton County, we talked about, they just have screen two running on the instructional side, so teachers have total control of the camera. But you do have the ability, there is another screen that you can have running twenty-four seven, and have that security feed, so that when you have that, you can say, "I'm in the classroom." If you have to go back and check the tape, you can really tell what happened. So that camera is unique, and again, it has two streams in subsequent district, how you manage the actual recording of the camera. This is a screen right from the platform that the teachers log into, and you can look up here and you see Kelsey, and that's her camera, and so she knows she's the only one that has access to the camera. She can go in at any time and maybe add an instructional coach and move them down to the bottom portion, now they can view my camera. Or if I have actually recorded something, I can go in and add a principal or add whomever so they can watch the recording of my video. The camera also has four different views that the teacher can choose. The single view, which you can pan till zoom within, so if I'm recording myself and I just want to see myself as a teacher, I can zoom in in front of the room. The default panel, it's more of an overview picture of the classroom. And then the most popular, the teachers we deal with, is the quadrant view. The upper left corner is more of the teacher herself, she's able to zoom in on her teaching practices, and then the other three quadrants, you can zoom in on learning stations, are focused on students. So anytime you set the recording of the video, you can decide your particular view. Not only is it powerful for teachers and helps you with security, it's also powerful for your students. Because if you're a teacher and you record your class, now you can share with your students. So you may have a hospital homebound student, you may have a student have a leave for a story today. You may have a student who, "Hey, I went to class today and I didn't get it." I can now log in at home and watch my teacher from home. Parents, I know y'all have been there just like me, I was pretty good in math, but I don't know how to teach today. So I sit down with my kid, if my son's teacher has disabilities, I can now go back and watch how that lesson is taught, and maybe I can help my son teach math like they teach it today. We have teachers using it with substitutes, and we know it's kind of a stereotype, the sub comes in, you hit plug and play, and the kids are just, you know, kind of nothing. Now, what you see in Newton County, what you see in Pitt County, what you see starting in Quinnett County, and other districts in Georgia, is if I'm a teacher, I know them about, maybe on September fifth, I can record my lesson in advance, and now when the sub comes into my classroom, they're playing that lesson that I would have thought out of entering right there in the classroom. In school suspension, you probably know that you don't want to take the kid out of the classroom and pull in a school suspension. Too often, when the kids say, "We need to pull out the lease," we got districts now, and a student goes in ISS, we're watching their classroom live, right in there in ISS. And I could go on and on, and we're trying to move quickly. When you put a camera in the classroom, what do you think happens to students when they know that the camera's holding?
They should decrease if they know their parents want to see it.
Right, so I'm going to bring up this video to talk about that.
So, one of the beauties of a camera in the classroom is there's so many different ways of using it. Depends on what the district's need is. He referenced Quinnett County. Quinnett County is more on the instructional side, that's what it's for, and they feel like they've equipped their schools with a lot of other security. They are using it for security, but the most important thing is for student achievement. Pitt County, on the other hand, Curtis Jones, who was in Griffiths, Fall Day, had audio enhancement. And his first initiative when he became superintendent of Pitt County was discipline. And he put it in for security and discipline reasons, instruction secondary to that. Newton County here, he talked about it, when they put the cameras in, they saw a forty-three percent decrease in discipline. And here's one middle school, which was what they called the ruckus middle school, in 2012, that does look pretty cool. In 2012, they had a thousand referrals. The next year, they started PBIS, and it dropped from a thousand to eight hundred and two. The next year, the only thing that they did different was they put the camera in the classroom, continued with PBIS, put a camera, and it went down to eighty-two discipline referrals. And what they talk about is time gain. They brought back five hundred and forty hours of instruction time where they were dealing with discipline issues just a few years earlier. So they're buying back instruction time. This, to me, is one of the most important reasons, and why cameras are now becoming almost, I don't want to say standard, I think they will soon, but it's to protect the teachers. And I always think about this, five, six years ago, with the cop, the police, nobody wanted a body camera, nobody. I don't know if there's an honest cop out there today that doesn't want that body camera. It protects them. And the same thing with the teacher, and if you think about it, it seems like, and because I'm in the space, it seems like every week on the news, I see a ten-second clip of a student that's videoed something in the classroom, right? It's all you see. You don't see what happened five minutes before, and... So it's all about the teacher. I'm going to give you two examples that happened in Newton County last spring that they talked about, paid for their system. Number one, during testing, a high school student was pregnant, female, obviously, had her cell phone out during testing, the teacher asked her to put it up, she didn't do it, teacher went, took the phone from her. The student went home and complained that evening that the teacher shoved a desk in her stomach and she's going to lose the baby. So the superintendent said, the next day, she drives up, she didn't know anything going on, but there's a host of people waiting on her. Not only the family, but they got the lawyer involved, the doctor involved, everybody's involved. Called the principal, long story short, they had the video. And they showed the video, and the lawyer actually apologized for wasting time. And she talked about, what would that have cost us as a district to represent that, not to mention what would happen to the teacher. One other example, in that same district, middle school male teacher, a female student asked for tutoring after a class, he turned his camera on because he was alone with her, and sure enough, she accused him of some accusations that worked through sexual advances. So again, he had his camera on and it protected. So it's protecting the teachers. Five years ago... Five years ago, I talked about the body camera, when Newton County just started this five years ago, it was all about the big brother. We don't want, we don't want the big brother watching us. Now, everybody keeps their camera on because of those two things in Newton County. It's not the big brother, nobody has time to watch, it's about protecting it. And we'll leave it here, return on investment, we talked about a lot of them, but again, when you look at the dollars and cents, I don't think there's a better return on investment that you could do, from the increase in student achievement and anytime anywhere learning, to the reduction in the things we talked about today, which is the discipline referrals, accusations, the legal costs, and the response time to emergencies. And we didn't even mention homebound, hospital homebound, the cost savings there of having a camera in the classroom. With that, we'll leave it, although we do wanna say this, in Georgia, you probably have about 20 something school districts as large as Gwinnett and Bitt County to as small as Jeff Davis, so all different kinds of school districts doing the audio and the cameras.
Board members, I'll just let you know, we wanted you to hear the presentation, because we're gonna do further work and probably bring it forward, because we should have this information ahead of time, and we will continue all that. Happy to put ahead any questions that you might ask of this gentleman right here. Mr. Martin?
What's the data storage constraints that they put on the system?
We would definitely have, depending on how big of an implementation we do, right? So we would have to look at how many classrooms, how many streams, those sort of things, we'd have to spec all of that out as we started the implementation. We do have some storage already in place that would allow us to utilize that, but we could have to add to that also.
I have a question, approximately, I'm not gonna give you an accurate number, approximately how much is gonna cost the district if we did all 33 hours of this? Excuse me, I mean, I'll fit each and every table within 33.
Let me just start by, you have the audio, the cameras, in different districts rolls it out different ways. Bitt County is rolling everything out at one time, audio, cameras, everything. Gwinnett County did district-wide audio first, and now they have all their elementary and middle schools with the audio, now they're rolling the cameras into, actually, the high schools too.
But then say we bought the roof for it.
If you bought everything, it probably adds up to about 50, 5,000 to 55,000 in the classroom with everybody, including the storage and the camera.
So the next question is, how many classrooms do we have, so we can get an approximation?
About 1,800. About right, Mr. Martin, about 1,800.
When we were looking at audio enhancement, we were looking at around 1,650 classrooms at that time. So we've added, we've added a few, when we have, over the past couple of years, added some classrooms from that point. And at that point, just the audio enhancement, because we've already made the investment in the safety system from the initial pilot, we were looking at around $2,000 per classroom for just the audio piece, that's an average. So some rooms a little more, some rooms a little less, depending on schools and their switch capability, those sorts of things too.
What's, and you are, and the staff working to come up with different options and things like that, where, how are the teachers and administrators in the schools being, participating in this, as far as their input? Is there a survey being done to find out what they feel about this?
Well, we haven't implemented anything outside the majority of the pilot that we did, and we need to keep that participants in there. We would structure, should have worked through this, we would structure it the same way, we would have some survey data, we would gather from teachers, administrators, students, and even the parents on shift to get a good round of, run of feedback, so we have good information in that consideration.
How is, with the technology that we already have, with the use of iPads, BYOC, is there any way we could utilize what we have in some sort of way? Because it sounds like even with the, the video portion, it's like what, what teachers do when they're training for student teachers and when they're doing things of that nature, they're already the owner of the lesson. Has that in some sense too?
They're requesting more of the personnel to do that manually, and I don't know what to do.
As far as the teacher instruction piece, it wouldn't be...
A teacher could stand up an iPad or the phone in a classroom and record that. Of course, from the district perspective, we wouldn't have access to that data. Also, the support side, all of that's on a different network, so if you've got a personal classroom BYD, that's separate than our, our production network, to keep that, that data safe, it's on that network also. So it's something we can, can look into, and we definitely present some, probably some significant challenges.
How long would the recorded video stay on file with Douglas County school system for a class teacher if they chose to use it? It would have been, I guess we would have to decide if it's optional or not.
That'd be a decision we'd have to make when we implemented the system, and of course, that would all depend on how much money we wanted to spend on storage also. And you, of course, take a lot of storage, so it would, it could take a lot of space very quickly.
So then we have to entertain the possibility of how long a video will be stored.
Those are obvious questions we want to be answering. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, thank you for your time and listening to that presentation. I'm going to take mine away, this is the end, this is the end of the session.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this item is for discussion tonight and approval at the September 6th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Elaine McPhee will continue to work with our schools to strengthen and promote STEM initiatives and activities in computer science in our schools. Attached, you have examples of the support that she provided during this past school year. The cost for these services will be $40,000, and the funding source is titled 2A, or Teacher Quality Grant Funds.
Discussion, discussion. Brings us down to action agenda, student achievement, leadership. Oh, I'm sorry, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We just wanted to continue our discussions on the budget and, and the tax digest and some adjustments made on that, and tonight we just want to bring a few other items to look at. One, as soon as we get through the end of August, we'll have our salaries completed for the fiscal year, and we'll do our June 30th financial statement, and hopefully have the under expenditure that was all through May of our expenses, so it's now 1.7%. That hopefully will continue through June, we'll know what our under expenditure would be, we'll get that closed out, and we hope that continues on the trend that we are now. But somewhere between 3 and 3.5 million, that's what we'll say this year, we'll have that figure, and we can look at some of the items on that. I did place at your desk tonight, something I wanted to share with the board, considering our local fair share and our estimated equalization, that's kind of an interesting analysis. And I actually had Doug Eason, who's renowned in the educational world, for helping us look at items, and Doug, he called me when he read some articles on our tax digest going up, and he was like, great, you're gonna have to look at that for your local fair share and your equalization for next year, or for the following year. And on this sheet, I just, we did an analysis of what our tax digest, or the equalized tax digest actually went up 5%. So when you looked at, and this would be for the funding for next year, the local fair share, because of the tax digest going up, our part of the local fair share was going up $1,676,000. Our, assuming our tax digest numbers stay the same, our equalization earnings, which our equalization earnings are those earnings that are given to the school district due to the wealth, we would actually move from the 326, 477 to 11, and our equalization earnings would go down 3.3 million dollars. So the total reduction would be right at $5 million that would come out in the next budget year. So that's something important to look at. The second sheet we have, it's the same sheet, but we have, we have a little bit, our tax collection this year obviously came in a little higher, we had those past few taxes that came in, and so instead of collecting $60 million, we actually go and collect somewhere around 75 million. And you can see on our local fair share, I mean, our equalization portion of that for next year, we're actually going net $605,000 to the good, instead of that 3.3 million. So the total that we'll look at in our next budget year, we'll look at about a decrease between the local fair share and equalization of about a million dollars. The following year, when that tax digest goes back to normal, we'll see that $5 million decline. So it's just something important to keep in mind, since this is two years away from, from significantly affecting us, but it was just an interesting analysis to see how the tax digest going up, one year helps you that year, but the next year, for your state earnings, it actually comes back and takes a little bit away because of your local fair share, and we're, we've, we've received a lot of equalization earnings, you know, in Douglas County, so that also affects those, which is obviously a more significant piece of that funding, but it's just something for us to keep in mind as we go through the next couple of years.
We all have, Mr. Chairman, I could just add in, we just thought that was important information that we wanted to have, as you consider long-term, ongoing costs, as possible adjustments to the budget, as we've been talking about that, and of course, the unknown with the lending formula changes that could come in. But it's interesting when you, you know, your tax digest goes up, you actually lose some equalization, and I appreciate Mr. King bringing that important information to the board.
Okay, I was on the, we continue to look at our banking programs and the funding that we can provide in those programs, and we'll continue to look at those and see what's the area in close to that, if we want to take some of those, one of the increased banking programs, and any other areas that we need. Like I said, this is something that I will bring back, hopefully, the first meeting of September will be closed, being closed down, and we can see where our under expenditure is, if you're maybe take some action on some of those adjustments, once we get some files
Thank you, Mr. King. And then brings us down to the action agenda, student achievement, leadership.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this item is for approval tonight. Recommendation is made to approve the Strategic Waiver School System Investing in Educational Excellence Contract as presented on March 31st, 2016. The Georgia Board of Education approved our Strategic Waiver School System Investing in Educational Excellence Partnership Contract to be in effect from July 1st, 2016, unless extended or renewed until June 20th, 2022. Signed copies of the attached contract and we sent to the Georgia Board of Education for signatures. Once signed by both parties, a fully executed contract will be in place.
Can I make a motion to approve the Strategic Waiver, the Strategic Waiver School System Investment in Education and Excellence Partnership Contract?
Summoned. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank you all for the amount of work and dedication to get this together so that we can see it implemented.
Does any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That brings us down to operations.
Mr. Chairman and board members, we are recommending tonight from Board of Education a approval resolution certifying that all accounts for the re-roofing at Gwinnett Elementary School have been paid in full on certification. By the Board of Education, that all accounts have, for the re-roofing have been paid in full at Gwinnett Elementary School. The Georgia Department of Education will issue a project cost certification form for the release of the remaining 10% allowance for reimbursement. That's approximately $33,903.90.
Can I make a motion to approve Gwinnett Elementary School reimbursement as presented?
Summoned. Second.
Any discussion? Stand down, all in favor? And that brings us down to information only.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have two field trips for your review.
The only other item of information in here is just some adjustments to the employee dress code, we also have to look at the employee dress code, and really to simplify, like we're way too precise and the style is gonna keep up, we can't keep up with the style, so it's a little much generic, and still very business dress, of course, which is very inappropriate to have. That brings us down to boardroom comments, Ms. King.
Thank you all for the hard work you put into this presentation regarding CCRPI and Georgia, our Georgia Roundstone assessments, and I also look forward to us as a board coming together to discuss the hidden resolution to uphold with the Albert County School District of Douglas County.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you again for all the hard work you pulled in that information. It really does help, take some time to go through it, but it's really beneficial if we get a good snapshot of what's going on so that we can make sure we have a good blueprint in place to move forward. So thank you for that, thank you. Welcome back. David, good to see you.
Ms. King?
Hi, Adam.
Morning, I want to thank the staff, Dr. Fritz for acting color by school here, no medical instruments, just an outstanding scholar, probably the only professional we had, the doctor on the board, and again, it's Dr. Lewis, and the teachers, and all the principals, definitely want to acknowledge all our new principals, eight of them that we have, I know they're gonna do an outstanding job, and we got, he's not a rookie anymore, I seen it sitting out there, Mr. Wee, he's in Salmur here, so we're looking for great things from you this year. Thank you.
No sophomore, so... That being said, we adjourn, thank you.